Hello, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming. This is the January 25th City Council Public Hearing. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Fugit. And please stand as you're able.
Face the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie? Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh? Ms. Smith?
Here.
And Councilman Thomas? Seven members present.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'd like to welcome everyone. This is the first public hearing this city council has had, maybe any city council has had in a long time. So normally, in our meetings, we do a lot of talking, and we may do a little bit tonight, but tonight, we're here to listen. And so, we are meeting tonight as a result of a resolution passed in June of last year with the purpose to gather testimony about the public's experience with local services that address emergencies related to mental health, substance abuse, and homelessness. Speakers are encouraged to follow three questions that will help guide them and inform this session. Those were submitted ahead of time to the 25 speakers who submitted their name ahead of the meeting. Each of the speakers will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. I'll try to give you a heads up of who's next, so you can get ready to come on down to the mic. We will follow the speakers by brief discussion among council members. We may ask some of the speakers follow-up questions, and we may just have a discussion among ourselves. So, we're here to listen and gather input from the public on this very important subject. Let me take a minute to thank everybody that's here, no matter what you're doing here, whether just to listen or to speak, including those of us on this stage. You could have been somewhere else, but you're here because you care about this, and I can guarantee you that everybody up here takes this very seriously and cares about it as well. I'll call out some names in just a minute, but I wanted to give a brief update from -- I spoke to Mayor Cannon and her administration. I wanted to give a brief update on one item that springs from this resolution, and that is funding for a joint RFP, or a program, to be designed in partnership with the county and other agencies across the city to help contribute a new program towards this cause. So, the city and county are collaborating with funds from both governments to follow-up on this. So, we are here to listen, gather input, and help shape that future program. So, without any other further ado, we'll get started. I have a list in front of me. Like I said, I'll try to give you a heads up, and rightly so. We'll start with Mr. Anthony Willis, followed by Cameron Henderson, followed by Catherine Ellis. So, Mr. Willis, if you'll come up. If you could, state your name and your address.
Yeah. I'm Deputy Chief Tony Willis. Of course, the Safety Division Police Department is where I reside truly most of the time.
Very good.
And I do want to tell you that Chief Noel would be here. I am here instead, if not for the park meeting next door. So, I want to open to give a little context about my experience with the mentally ill and my passion for this issue. I worked for five years as a case manager for McNabb as a very young individual, just out of college, the first couple of years with the homeless, and I met some amazing people. And it shaped my thinking to this day and forevermore. It is an absolute crisis, as we all know. There is no one that is here that isn't committed to that. Everybody here is concerned about this issue. There's no one that is in conflict with that. That is a like-minded thing, or, as you said, no one would have committed the time to this. And I want council to know, and those present, that the Knoxville Police Department is enlightened on this issue, and it is a point of emphasis, and has been for many years, not just with training our co-responders and their mission and their passion for this, but all of our officers. That is something that we are absolutely committed to. And you'll find that our officers who are signed to the co-response, since it started in 2020 in October, they fielded their first call, in fact, on October 13th, 2020. There's been some amazing success. And we know that lives have been changed, but how do you measure that? I cannot give you a number. None of us can on any interaction with someone. How that may resonate, and how that may ripple into other positive interactions from that person. So, since becoming an officer 28 years ago, I still see some of the same faces that I interacted with those many years ago, from 91 to 96, being on the front end of the bed reduction at Lake Shore, helping the homeless. My privilege, this is not a me moment. I am just telling you my passion and give you context, as is the first question. The complexion has changed. I was part of the homeless coalition in 91 with the first attempt, the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. That is not a failed effort. It is altruistic and still something we all hope to achieve. It's a big, big thing that a lot of people have worked very, very hard to impact. It's an issue across the country, but we are also part of that. The aspects of services that need to be improved is, we need more champions for those that are chronically and persistently mentally ill. We know this. Anyone who is involved in that effort, that is someone who is like-minded with us. We thoroughly believe in the co-response program. In fact, we're the first law enforcement agency in the state of Tennessee to implement one. We're very committed to growing that. Chief Noel, that is his vision, is to grow that program as we can going forward. We believe that it has been that impactful. We do. And I want you to know that our officers, when they are on scenes responding, it is amazing to see how the person in crisis gravitates to them, forgets about this costume, and just sees an individual who's trying to help them. I've seen it many times. That's what they're committed to. Our capacity, certainly, we are always looking at ways that we can improve, ways that we can be better with the program we have. But as I stated, it is our attempt, it's our hope that the program will expand that we are a part of today.
Thank you. Next up, Cameron Henderson.
Good evening. I'm Cameron Henderson with the Salvation Army. I serve on Broadway, 409 North Broadway, at the Salvation Army downtown. And I've been here about two and a half years, and I've enjoyed my stay. I'd like to tell you about a moment that I observed when we were serving at the cold weather shelter just over the past weekend. A gentleman who I've seen before in that corridor laid on the floor and began to take everything out of his bag, every single item out of his bag. He seemed just fine much earlier in the evening, but as the evening progressed, he began to take everything apart. Every liquid he had, much was on the floor, or it was poured and repoured into different things. Every pen that he had was taken apart piece by piece. We found pens and ink all over the floor. He had shaving cream on his face multiple times during the day, and he'd walk down the hall and get some coffee with shaving cream on his face and come back and lay back down. He would sort his things all over, resort his things all over. By the end of the night, he was up all night, he had repacked his bag, and he had left. Obviously, we had to clean up quite a mess. How do you house somebody with those kinds of situations? How do you help them day by day by day? This is some of the challenges that we're dealing with. Some of our staff observe that in the approximately 90 to 95 people who stay with us at night, about 80% of them throughout the year are dealing with some kind of either their observation or their self-identifying with mental health concerns. And about 45 of them indicate that it's causing problems for them to find or to maintain their housing. It's one of the difficulties that they're having, either causing evictions because of their trauma, or causing difficulty with employment and keeping employment. It's just a very difficult problem. You can add to that often substance misuse, one of the significant issues. People with mental health disorders, without treatment or without help, or often with it maybe, will self-medicate, and they'll find ways to relieve some of the challenges that they're having. And then, we have multiple problems trying to help them with. These complicate issues, and they take a lot of time to resolve. It makes it very difficult to help someone with these kinds of issues to find housing and then to keep that housing over time, or else they get evictions, and that gets on their record, and then we have to start all over again, sometimes, well, for a while. It makes it very difficult to get it and then keep that housing. I'll also suggest what things that might need to be improved, although I know the community's working hard on it, but case management for housing, case management for those who have these psychiatric needs or other difficulties, those case managers are vital. We're following a housing-first model in our community, then we need more case managers. We need more helpers to take the time to be able to connect with these people, and to reduce greatly the time it takes for them, from the time they say, "Yes, I need help," to the time they are able to enter into a program or to get that help. So, more case management, I would suggest, is really, really needed. It creates a painful cycle without that, because they'll say yes, and then, over the time, they lose either that energy, that impetus, or they just get lost somewhere out there, and they don't come back when it's their time. It just creates a very difficult time. So, case management, I would say, is greatly needed, not implicating that someone's doing anything wrong. It's just more is needed, I would say. And mental health care system seems to be bottlenecked, and perhaps because of case management, maybe because of more -- we appreciate the community servants already working on that, but we need more, we suggest. Our current clients have to wait up to two months for entry into mental health. Once they say, "Yes, I need help," sometimes one month, but often two months to get help into some of our local agencies. When they get that help, it's tremendous, but it takes a while. How much damage can be done during that time? How many lose their willingness to enter treatment, or how many get lost during waiting those two months? It just creates difficulty. The last question is tricky, because we're doing a lot with the homeless community. Should we, the Salvation Army, then pick up and start this kind of programs for directly serving those with mental health situations or needs? I don't know if we should, but we do have spaces available that are either becoming available or that have available that could be utilized for those needs. We would need a lot of help. The spaces would need to be retrofitted, and staffing would need to be put into place. But can we help? Yes. Is it ours? I don't know, but we can certainly be part of the conversation to determine what's next. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Catherine Ellis. Catherine will be followed by Josh Spencer, Ben Harrington, and Gabe Klein.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Catherine Ellis, and I am the Executive Director of the Knoxville Family Justice Center. And we are a collaborative organization. We are the hub for all domestic violence services in the city of Knoxville and Knox County. We have partnerships with just about every agency that's represented here tonight, as well as probably 30 more. In some ways, I think we're the square peg for the round hole tonight. We don't specifically address mental health issues. We do not address substance abuse issues, and we are not a group that does homelessness remediation or issues. But a large portion of the victims of domestic violence who come to the Family Justice Center every year are themselves having mental health issues, substance abuse issues, or are dealing with an abuser who has those issues. And so, it is something that is pervasive in the issue of domestic violence. And one of the things that is hugely important for us, we do immediate needs. We talk a lot in the city about homelessness and the need for additional shelter. When we have somebody who needs shelter, they need it tonight. It is not something where we can put them on a list or we can wait. And currently, the two major shelters for domestic violence victims in Knoxville, there are 69 beds for women who are fleeing domestic violence and four beds for men fleeing domestic violence. Those 69 beds, 58 of them are available for women with children. If a woman with three children goes, that's four beds. And so, that is the grand total. We have 73 beds in all of Knoxville dedicated for those fleeing domestic violence. I reached out to organizations today. Everybody is full. So, if we have a victim who comes in and needs shelter today, there's really three options. First, they can go to the street. Second, they can go back to their abuser. Third, we at the Family Justice Center try to come up with a stopgap, and that stopgap for us is paying for a hotel room, doing something to get them intermediate shelter until space at a shelter opens up for them. These are people who are fleeing, fleeing a violent situation, and then they get thrown into a situation of not knowing where they're going to stay, potentially with their children. It is one of the reasons why victims of domestic violence so often go back to their abusers, is because they don't have a roof over their head, and that is scary. I think any one of us would be scared of that. And they are put into a situation where their life is changing, everything is blowing up around them, and our city can't provide them with a safe place for them and their children. As far as capacity goes, we do provide hotel rooms and other things, but that is purely based on grant availability. Our entire operating budget is $520,000 a year. Our partner agencies come to us to provide the hotels. They do not have that ability in their funding because of the way funding is provided. So, we do the majority of that on a very limited budget. One thing that would make it much better for us and for victims in general is to increase the capacity of shelters for victims of domestic violence, especially those with children in our community. Another part of this is law enforcement's response. We need law enforcement to be able to make determinations at the scene of whether or not somebody needs shelter. There's a process for that called the lethality assessment program that we think KPD and KCSO should hopefully implement. I do have a paper on it that I can provide to all of you. It's something that would require some training, require some updates to computer databases, but it also requires an increase in the amount of shelter space, because part of it is, if a patrol officer on scene determines from this assessment that lethality is a high risk and that this person needs to escape and get away, they call the shelter, and they get them into the shelter immediately. And right now, we don't have any beds, so we can't do that with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Next up is Josh Spencer.
Good evening. Josh Spencer, 10,000 140 Galus Point Drive in Knoxville. I'm here representing American Medical Response, who's the contract at A.M.R.'s provider here in Knox County and the city of Knoxville. AMR responds to about 60,000 911 calls each year. About two-thirds of those are in the city limits of Knoxville. Of all the calls we respond to annually, almost 10% of those individuals are experiencing some sort of behavioral health crisis or a substance abuse overdose. That number is staggering in this community. The severity of their illnesses and issues, they do vary fairly widely, from some just feeling anxious to some that are experiencing significant psychotic episodes. Unfortunately, these numbers seem to be rising. Over the last three or four years, it's steadily increased, and we're fearful that it may continue. Today, most of these patients are being transported to local hospitals where they do receive stabilizing care, but not long-term services, not long-term solutions available. We're certainly encouraged by this hearing and by the group of stakeholders that are coming together in recent months to expand the opportunities for behavioral health care outside of emergency departments. Late last year, the Knox County Health Department established a task force of hospitals, public safety agencies, and behavioral health clinicians to achieve this goal. This task force meets regularly to establish protocols for which patients can be safely treated in outpatient behavioral health centers as opposed to being transported to the ED. Groups involved currently are the McNabb Center, the Knoxville Center for Behavioral Health, University of Tennessee Medical Center, East Tennessee Behavioral Health, and Ridge View Behavioral Health are very actively engaged on solutions. Because this particular issue represents almost 10% of our work, AMR certainly has a very strong interest in increasing the availability in crisis areas. Since 2022, we've operated a nurse navigation program where 911 callers with non-emergencies can receive help with accessing local care instead of going to the emergency department. Our hope is that with that continued partnership of many of these agencies that I had mentioned, we can continue to get more help to these mental health patients and those that are having a behavioral health crisis. Finally, as we embark on a new contract that begins February the 1st in the city of Knoxville and Knox County, we are hosting a meeting even next week with police, fire departments, public health, and hospital systems to launch another avenue of collaboration. Our focus next week and in the coming months will be solely to expand our services for those calling 911 with non-emergent conditions. As we work together on these solutions, we will certainly keep the council informed. We feel like our partnership, or we're happy to offer any of our partnerships, our resources, our clinical data, our clinical expertise, to anyone looking to enhance the mental health system, the mental health crisis, and substance abuse in the city of Knoxville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Next up, Ben Harrington.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Ben Harrington. I'm the CEO of the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee, a position I've held since 1994. Our offices are at 9050 Executive Park Drive, 37923. That's the Cedar Bluff area. So, to answer the questions that are before us today, we have had some very positive experiences with the existing crisis response services and the city of Knoxville's led co-response unit. It didn't always start out that way. My expertise really started in 1998 with an officer-involved shooting death of a resident here in Knoxville. And I had to get real mouthy at the time before I learned how to be diplomatic and convince the mayor at the time, Mayor Ash, that we needed to improve law enforcement training with regards to mental illness. And he agreed. And so, we had that opportunity to expand mental health training with our law enforcement officers in a big way. But that's led to a natural evolution of our community's response over the next 25 years. Doubling mental health training for law enforcement officers led to the creation of the Crisis Intervention Team, which would lead to where we are today, a co-response team led by a social worker and a police officer to respond to calls. So, what's the next evolution of our response in our community? Certainly, what the chief wants to do in terms of fully expanding the police-led response team is appropriate to make sure it's offered 24/7 and is fully staffed to be engaged. That unit, when you look at, when you compare it to other communities across the country, is actually stellar. Only 3% of calls do not end up in mental health care. They end up with the incarceration of the individual. So, it really is stellar. But let's ask the question, where else could we go? And that's very important. We could make Knoxville even a better community with its response efforts, and that's what we've been asked to discuss a little bit today. But how we get there is what needs to be improved. And I don't want to make it look like we're poking fingers at anybody, but we don't have really great data on this. We really do not. Our colleague from 911 is here. I'm sure he's going to talk a little bit about the 911 center. And there's a lot of calls that come in to the 911 call center. There's not really great data that exists to show what the resolution of all those calls were. What happened to the folks that didn't have the co-response team called out? So, there's a lot of people that we don't know the resolution of, and so, that's an issue. The other issue is, we have 8,500 people that go to an emergency room in Knoxville annually for a mental health cause. Two-thirds, 5,610, are non-urgent. So, what happens to them? So, there's some data holes that exist, and so, we do need much better data to be able to better understand the breadth of our challenge before us. So, I did want to say that where we go with this is very important for us all to consider. We could stay with what we've got, a law enforcement-led co-response team, or we could go for the brass ring. We could do what very few other communities across the country do, and that's actually do both. So, think about that. We could do both. We could do both. Nashville has both programs. They have law enforcement-led and a civilian-led response team. There's a way to do both. It's going to require a ton of training, a ton of expertise with 911 to train their folks to dispatch appropriately, but we could have both. We don't need to walk away from today thinking it's a one or the other proposition. If we want to make Knoxville great, and it's already great, if we want to make it greater, we need to think about how we do both to really serve the people of Knoxville well in their time of need. Thank you.
Next up, Gabe Klein. Ms. Klein will be followed by Brad Anders, Leann Hume and Hilliard, and Misty Goodwin.
My name is Gabe Klein. I'm with Volunteer Ministry Center, 511 North Broadway. I really struggled with what to say about my experiences with VMC, with services that address emergencies related to mental health, substance use, and homelessness. How are we even defining an emergency? Some would define an emergency as an urgent, sudden, and serious event or unforeseen change in circumstances that necessitates immediate action or remedy harm or avert imminent danger to life, health, or property. By this definition, an emergency related to mental health is a person who is harmed themselves or others, while an emergency related to substance use is someone experiencing overdose. But what is an emergency relative to homelessness? For the person experiencing homelessness, it's that moment when they lose their housing. All the other emergency calls from people experiencing homelessness are about a physical, mental health, or substance use emergency that's been exacerbated by the experience of living in shelter or a place not meant for habitation. VMC, we've used both mental mobile crisis and the co-response unit for mental health emergencies. The co-response units are great. They're well-trained, they're compassionate, they're not always available. And for many neighbors, the presence of a uniformed officer is traumatic regardless of how empathic they are. Accessing mobile crisis is an issue when neighbors need to get to an ER for evaluation. Our state laws also limit what can be done in a mental health emergency, and often individuals who are clearly experiencing crisis are not enough of an imminent risk to be hospitalized, and that can be very frustrating to wait for somebody to decompensate before they can get help. At VMC, we're trained to administer naloxone. We call 911 in cases of overdose. While some first responders are great, others treat our neighbors with disrespect and make degrading comments even when the call is for a medical emergency completely unrelated to substance use. It's my belief that we don't really have an emergency response system relative to the experience of homelessness. This year, for the first time, we had warming centers, which were very well-used and very much appreciated. We have emergency shelters, street outreach workers, case managers. KPD does respond to complaints from housed neighbors about encampments, but none of those responses fulfill the immediate needs of the person at the moment that they become homeless. Our current system lacks the ability to provide that immediate action to remedy Our current system lacks the ability to provide that immediate action to remedy harm or avert danger. It's been said before that all of our service systems suffer from a lack of capacity. Given this lack, our homeless service system would be improved by all providers using our coordinated entry system, known as CHAMP, to assess vulnerability at the first contact and then prioritizing the most vulnerable for placement into their programs. This would allow CHAMP to function as the triage and coordination system it was intended to be. Universal use of CHAMP would mean that our limited case management and housing services are being provided to those most in need. It would also allow us to define a clear path towards housing with neighbors upon their first contact with the system, and it would help us quantify what additional resources are needed for rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing and develop a true community response. We need an alternative, trauma-informed, mobile behavioral health and medical response for mental health and substance use crises and physical health checks where there's no violence involved. One of the things that prevents neighbors from accessing care currently is that they don't reliably know who will respond. Neighbors fear legal punishment or degrading treatment because they've experienced this, not from every response, but from enough responders that it prevents them from seeking help. A new option for consistent trauma-informed response would increase the likelihood that people reaching out for help will actually engage in needed follow-up treatment. We greatly need to expand access to low-income, affordable housing, especially for individuals. The thing that ends the emergency of homelessness is housing. Without inadequate supply of housing that people can afford, no amount of connection to services or trauma-informed emergency response will be enough. The vast majority of those experiencing homelessness don't need permanent supportive housing. They simply need an affordable home and short-term support to become stable. A lead agency in our community that could focus on landlord engagement to expand access to housing is needed. We also need supportive housing outside of the homeless services system. According to the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse website, we only have 36 licensed mental health support living beds in Knoxville. PSH provides an additional 333 housing units for chronically homeless individuals and homeless veterans who need support services. But people should not have to experience homelessness, especially not chronic homelessness, in order to access supportive housing. The lack of capacity in housing, substance use treatment, mental health care, and physical health care means that neighbors can't follow through. Yes, adults are responsible for their own choices and decisions, but none of us function our best when we are in crisis and our options are limited. VMC welcomes the chance to be involved in creating a system that better addresses the needs of our neighbors. We're not mental health providers. We're not first responders. We do engage all the time with neighbors who are encountering barriers in our system, and we'd like to be a part of the solution.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Next up, Brad Anders.
Hello, Vice Mayor and Council. It's great to be before you today, and thank you for inviting us. Our office obviously takes, Brad Anders, Knox County Executive Director, Knox County 911, I'm sorry. Our office obviously takes thousands and thousands of calls a year related to folks that are dealing with homelessness, mental health issues, mental crisis. And those don't necessarily come from someone in their community. They may come from a passerby, and so a concerned individual or a caseworker. And we would like to have more resources to send instead of, co-response is phenomenal. It's a great first step. But if we had, and we are more than willing and eager to participate with anybody that the city or the county contracts with and ask us to facilitate sending some different assistance than what is normal, an alternate. We can't, we've been asked on a few occasions to deviate from our contracts with the city and the county or the MOUs. We can't do that. We can't get away from that. We are responsible to the city and the county to use their resources and who that they ask us to resource out. We have spent some time looking for and sent some folks to some training for critical incident training to determine on the phone if we can better guide some resources to some folks. That's a difficult training. It's different for law enforcement and fire than it is for telecommunications that we have, and it just takes some more detailed training. We're trying to find that best practice training for our people to send them through that. That is a process we're working on. I would say that any resource that we have needs to be consistent. It needs to be available at all times, 24/7, to be the most effective. It frustrates if you have one shift that has a resource and the other shift does not have a resource. It can be very frustrating to know what to do with that when you don't have that resource. And so if the co-response unit's unavailable, not only is it frustrating for us, it's frustrating for the officer that has to respond because they know that probably going to be a repeat call coming because that co-response wasn't available. So it has to be consistent. It has to be funded. It has to be something that the resource is always available. When I started in law enforcement almost 30 years ago, mobile crisis was a brand-new thing, and mobile crisis was so efficient, they would come to the scene with somebody in crisis, write the papers right then, and we would drive them to their facility. That resource became expensive, and so that, as quick as it was and efficient as it was, it became overwhelmed. And so to have something effective, it has to be substantial and it has to be consistent. But we are eager to participate with any data. The front end is raw data that we'll give you at any time, what happened to those folks or what resources they received after we get off the phone or send the resource. We don't get all that all the time, and so we'll be more than happy to give you all the raw data that you need from our calls for service by address, by call type, that you need. But we're eager to work with whoever, if there is an alternative response, that when they're contracted with the city or the county, we're more than eager to work with them and fit them into our dispatch protocols.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Leanne Human-Hilliard.
Thank you, council members. I am Leanne Human-Hilliard, Executive Vice President for the Helen Ross McNabb Center. You all have seen me provide information for you all in the past on our workshops on this issue before. What I will say is the Helen Ross McNabb Center has been in the area of providing services for individuals who are mentally ill, providing services for individuals who have a substance use disorder, and providing services for individuals who are in need of housing for over 76 years. In the past 20 years, we have slowly, because of need and because we feel like it's our mission, is to expand services for individuals who are in urgent need or in crisis. So what you've seen in Knoxville with the help of the city and the county and entities like the Department of Mental Health, you've seen a continuum be created. And I think we should, we could be very proud of that continuum. There are still gaps in all continuums and still ways you can continue to refine continuums so that you have something for everyone in need to get the right care at the right time. That's the ultimate goal. So what I'll say in five minutes, I think my first request would be for us to continue to look to expand co-response. It has been very successful. Since 2020, we've served and responded to over 3,000 calls. Less than 3% end up going to jail. Very, most of the individuals, over 50%, get referrals just on the spot, information and connecting to mental health, substance use disorder treatment services. And then many are referred and brought to the Behavioral Health Emergency Care Center or CSU and things like that, and many, if need to, we can transport to the emergency department. So that process is in place, but we are not 24/7. We don't have a team that can cover every, you know, for a seven-day period. We have four staff. So that is still a need that we would hope that you would consider to expand. From the beginning, when we looked at expanding and creating our next step, which was co-response, we have and will continue to say there is the need and space for an alternative response program. It doesn't have to be either or. It can be and in both. We have seen and visited and talked to other cities who have one or the other and both, and they fill a lot of needs for those communities. So I think that what I will echo from some of the other presenters, I would say, that if we would want to do that thoughtfully and just look at the data and make sure that we create an alternative response team that meets the unique needs of Knoxville, because there are a lot of different models out there when you talk about, in a broad category of alternative response programs. It's our mission, it's McNabb's mission to be in this area of work. We would, we not only feel like we would want to be a part of that solution, we want to be open to that. We also want to be inclusive and continue to refine and support the services that we have. So with that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you. Misty Goodwin. Ms. Goodwin will be followed by Gary Compton, Perinda Cotry, and Marty Baker.
Good evening. I'm Misty Goodwin and the Director of Social Services for CAC. CAC has a great deal of experience in providing emergency services and even more experience in keeping people out of emergencies. Last year, we saw more than 52,000 unduplicated individuals whose issues dealt primarily with having sufficient resources to pay their rent, pay their utilities, meet basic needs. A lot of what we do is providing that assistance, home repairs, food assistance, and services to children through Head Start and seniors through the Office on Aging and Mobile Meals programs. Last year, our Social Services Department provided case management services to over 1,200 households, and we housed 579 households who were literally homeless. While CAC provides an array of social services to meet the significant needs, we are not mental health experts, and we rely on community mental health partnerships to provide services and accept our referrals. In our experience, we have found that emergency services do make an effort to engage with the homeless, the chronically mentally ill, and addicted population in Knoxville in a very positive way, from what we have witnessed. When we have someone who is having a mental health crisis or urgent situation, and we've had to call KPD, we have been told to specifically ask for one of their CTI-trained officers and a social worker that could come out to respond to whatever we may be dealing with. Our experience, more times than not, though, has been that there may not be one available because there's just not enough, that, you know, the need is greater than what they're able to do right at the moment. And so KPD typically just sends an officer and whoever they can send. While these officers have always tried to be extremely helpful and very understanding, what we have seen is just frequently they don't always know what the resources are in the community. And we frequently hear unless they are a danger to themselves or to others, we put them on a no trespass order if they're, you know, at our building and we're trying to get them someplace else, that there's really not much that they can do. And so the result, as I said, is people just don't get connected to the resources necessarily that we were hoping they might get connected to, particularly when we are not able to, for whatever reason, connect them ourselves. Years ago, when we were able to call mobile crisis, they could send trained mental health responders out to the site where the individual was, and this worked very well. As you all know, we serve the four KCDC high-rises that are elderly and disabled, and several of those do typically tend to take people who are formerly homeless that are not in mental health treatment, they need to engage in treatment. And so we see a high number of people who we need that intervention with and just trying to get someone to come onsite to deal with that. It's now our understanding that mobile crisis is no longer really mobile, and so therefore we really don't call mobile crisis as often as we used to because we know we'll be told we've got to transport them to the hospital either ourselves or we've got to call an ambulance to transport them. And so we, you know, when it's absolutely necessary, we will do that. But what we found is the best outcome in our experience is if we have a case manager that can go to the hospital with the person to make sure that they get the care that they need, and in most cases, when we know they need to get admitted, to stay there, to work with them, to talk to the social workers on staff at the hospital, to really try to engage and get the services that they need to have in place. While we have found that that is very successful, it's simply not something that's possible with everyone that we see who has this need. While we both, while we have both the V.Huck and CSU, there are several significant barriers that we see, just such as the limitation on who is eligible, with the majority of referrals restricted to who KPD, mobile crisis, and McNabb staff identify as eligible people who can go there. Accessibility because of both of the, accessibility creates an issue just because of location. If it's off Ball Camp Pike, which is close to downtown, but it's not particularly conveniently located if we just wanted to send someone in to go out to walk in when that's possible. It's also in our experience that many officers have been trained in CIT training, but they're not always, as I said, currently, they don't know the current available resources. And so we frequently see people just not getting connected where they need to get connected. I will just say that right before I came to this meeting, I encountered a gentleman who was significantly mentally ill at the close of our building. I engaged with him myself, tried to get emergency, well, tried to talk to him about where he had been before. He didn't know his name, didn't know where he came from, and couldn't really tell me much. And so we ended up luckily being able to use CAC transit to get him transported to Carm for the evening, and we will follow up and try to engage with services tomorrow. But that's typically sometimes the only resource that we have, especially when there's not 24-hour care available or emergency response. And so we support definitely both options between KPD and the partnership here, but also to have more 24-hour availability for people in mental health crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Compton.
Well, good evening. Good evening. My name's Gary Compton. I'm Deputy Chief, Operations, Knoxville Fire Department at 1630 Huron Street. So first and foremost, I want to thank City Council for allowing the fire department to participate in this workshop. KFD regularly responds to calls for service that relates to mental health, substance abuse, and homelessness. In 2023, we responded to approximately 29,000 calls for service. 963 of these calls were related to overdose. Finding effective ways to address these issues can undoubtedly benefit our community. The fire department's mission is to save lives and protect property. We are willing to support the community stakeholders, whether it be additional training for our personnel such as crisis intervention training, linking people to available community resources, or partnering with local healthcare leaders so that existing response structures can complement the process. We look forward to hearing from all the speakers tonight to discuss ways that we can be more effective and we offer our input. Question number two, services that can be improved. I think the key word here tonight is more. We've heard more mentioned often. So I think it's more options. We've got to remember that we want to get the right care to the right patient at the right time. So everything has a trickle-down effect to it. Mental health, substance abuse, homeless, a large amount of those folks wind up in the emergency department. The emergency department's become overloaded. We wind up with our EMS folks tied up on those type of calls, fires. So that takes away from the other emergencies. So I think the take-home point is just more options. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Perinda Cotry.
Hello, I'm Perinda Cotry. I am CEO of Cherokee Health Systems. My office is at 2018 Western Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37921. I just also want to echo the gratitude that we feel that the council is paying attention to this issue. This is for many of us, the work of our heart. We see people who are in deep pain every day, and we've chosen to walk this path. And any support and attention we can bring to this matter is just tremendously important to us. Cherokee Health Systems is an integrated provider of primary care, medical, behavioral health, dental, optometry, case management, and pharmacy services. We have a heart for people who are disadvantaged, under-resourced. We have a homeless health center in downtown Knoxville, and then we also see a number of unhoused individuals in our, one of our six clinics in Knox County. I'm also a licensed psychologist, so I'm a behavioral health provider, and I'm very passionate about this issue, and I feel like I can speak both from the passionate about this issue, and I feel like I can speak both from a clinical perspective as well as an administrative perspective. These are complex issues. Even one of them, substance use disorder, or mental health issues, or housing, all the different factors that go into this, these are incredibly complex issues. They will not be fixed by one solution. They will not be addressed by one silver bullet. It is going to take an entire framework. It's going to take a really nuanced, scalable network of committed individuals and organizations, which you already have. You have the ingredients. We stand ready. It is going to take that, but the level of coordination that is needed is truly, truly important. And I will comment on, you know, a number of key points made by others. Number one, this is a continuum, and this has to be tailored. People are not like individual robots, everybody presenting with the same issue. We're not, we're not like that. Everybody is different and has different needs in different times. We need to build a system to, that will be responsive to that. Because right now, we were often using some of our most precious resources in ways that are not the most impactful. So whatever system we have, we need to make sure that it can be tailored to the need, and it can be resilient and flexible enough for that. This is a model we use as an integrated primary care provider. If someone has physical health issues that are minor, they don't get the most intensive level of care and a ton of medicine. They get exactly, they get what they need. If someone has multiple chronic health problems and multiple chronic mental health problems, then they will get a much more intense level of care. So that matching of need with service and resource, it does take time to build and coordinate, but it can be done. It is being done throughout the healthcare system, and certainly it's something at Cherokee Health Systems we're very, very passionate about and intentional because our resources are so limited, they're really limited. We stand with all of the others here. We want to be part of the solution. We want to be part of the overall plan and approach. I will also advocate for some attention to prevention. Many of the things that people have talked about is what we do to prevent emergencies. If we put all of our resources at the end where people are in their most dire circumstances, then we are, we will never catch up. We will always be reactive. We have to start looking at prevention, at risk intervention. Let's try to help people before they get in such a bad place that they are in a place of despair, and we need an entire team of community resources to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Marty Baker. Ms. Baker will be followed by Keith Alshuler, Tammy Snyder, and David Akers.
Thank you for having us tonight, Vice Mayor and the City Council. This is my first getting to speak. Care Cuts was born in 2016. I'm just a barber, born and raised in Knoxville, Tennessee, and wanted to cut hair for the homeless. And so I had volunteered for about 10 years for Maxine Rains, and I saw that we needed to do more. So Care Cuts was birthed. Through Care Cuts Ministry, God has used us to realize these needs that everybody has spoke about, okay? And I want to bring up my experiences. I just want to share with you, we are boots on the ground. We're no barriers. Everyone is welcome. We don't care if you're red, black, or white. We don't care, you don't have no appointment. We don't care what religion you are, and everybody is welcome. And the people that I meet on Ground Zero, is what I call it, they can't make appointments. They don't know what day it is. They don't even remember their birthdays sometimes. So we start with a haircut. And I don't know, but I want to ask you all, how does a haircut make you feel? How does it make you feel? Makes you feel good? Makes you feel better? Then we realized that they didn't have a mailbox, so we started getting their mail. And then they were like, "Look, look at me. Look, Ms. Marty." And then they start looking, and they're like, "Wow, my daddy, my mama." And they want you to sit down and for you to look at who their mama was and who their grandmother was. And so it brings them back to not that they're homeless and that they're an addict. I don't think anybody would sign up to be in addiction. If we took a clipboard and passed out at Care Cuts, I don't think one person would sign up for that. And that's what we've realized. Thank God that many has escaped addiction, but I've learned that it starts with mental illness. So what we do at Care Cuts is we cut their hair, and then we get them clean clothing, and then we get them a shower, and then they get the haircut, because we don't have a salon. We used to, but we cut their hair after they get their shower. And then they go to resources. What is resources? Resources is, you can use our mailbox, okay? We can get you a birth certificate. Really? Yeah. So we partner with Connect Ministry. We send them over there with a bus pass to get their voucher, okay? But I'm from Florida, Ms. Marty, I ain't got no $50. She ain't got no... I said, "That's okay. If you're from Florida, we don't care. If you're from Wisconsin, we're going to get you a birth certificate today, okay?" So that's what we do. So once they get their birth certificate, their ID, their hard copy, so that they know that they can't get the social security card without that. So this is what hope and dignity in restoring life is about at Care Cuts. And I'm going to fast forward to the Justice Center, okay? Because I've just got one minute left. The Justice Center is the perfect model. It's all under one roof. Randy Nichols is the smartest man I know, and that's who built that, okay? The homeless community is all over. You've got VMC up here, you've got Carm over here, you've got CAC over here, you've got the veterans way down there, you've got, what else was we talking? The behavior health, or just to walk in for an emergency care, BHUB over there on, on... I mean, I run my wheels off, and I'm happy to. But when you take them to Center Point, and they call you when you're 10 minutes down the road and say, "Ms. Marty, you got to come back and get him, he needs a medical clearance." And I said, "What? You don't have a nurse there? You don't have a doctor at the Helen Ross McNab BHUB and all this Center Point?" "No, ma'am. You got to come pick him back up." I said, "You're lying, ain't you?" "No." So I go get them. Then we go to the ER, and then we sit all night, and we come out with a medical clearance. Then we go back to Center Point. So collaboration is what Jimmy Buckner taught me, and it's what we got to do. The medical and the mental is not even collaborating, okay? And we should be able to call one another. VMC should be able to call. Daryl calls me all the time. He's the only one I hear from. Carm, we'd be able to pick up the phone and call. We should be able, we should all be under one roof. And can I get an amen?
Thank you. Next up, Keith Alshuler.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you. My name's Keith Alshuler. I'm the Administrator of Fort Sanders Regional Medical Center at 1901 Clinch Avenue. And as we've heard already, and will continue to hear from all of our community members, the growing and dramatic increase in mental health, substance abuse, and unsheltered individuals in Knox is continuing to grow. And unfortunately, many of these patients, as we've heard as well, present to our hospital EDs after they've been picked up in the field by the first responders. Many of them are suffering from depression, bipolar disorder, noncompliance with their meds, or have overdosed on illicit medications or alcohol. Some simply need food and shelter. To give you a sense of perspective on the numbers of psychiatric visits we've looked at over the last many, many years, we've seen a 161% increase in the numbers of psychiatric admissions to our hospital ED since 2013. So that's a 15% increase year over year. And with closure of Tenova Physicians Regional, we saw another rapid increase in that rate of admission to our facility in particular. I noticed with interest also recently a consultant report that was given to the county, I think, by one of the EMS providers, and they indicated that the high volume of EMS runs to Mission District and back to our hospital in particular, and UT as well, have gotten to be outrageous, and it really is taxing on their ability to respond to other community residents throughout the county. And similarly to that, the more patients that we've seen, and we continue to see in our ED, it's taxed our facility as well. So it's added time for every admission, for everybody that comes to the hospital in an acute basis, trying to get served. I saw one patient that I'm very much aware of that saw 220 visits to our hospital alone last year. From what I understand, they spent other visits in other facilities all year long. They probably spent a day in a hospital 365 days a year, all year last year, probably getting food, probably getting shelter, getting all the admission criteria and analysis that we need to do to clear them. And that's sort of what we're dealing with, day in, day out. And I had a whole list of other patients that were at our facility multiple times during the week, throughout the year, and it continues to grow. We've done a lot of things to try to improve the speed in transitioning these patients to psychiatric hospitals. We have psychiatrists that are on staff in the ED constantly. We're constantly trying to dispose of these patients in appropriate hospitals. We have peer navigators, extreme amount of expense trying to resolve some of these problems because we are a safety net for the community. I've concentrated on psych admissions in particular, but I could also spend as much time on substance abuse. We see so many patients that have contracted AIDS, HIV, hepatitis, through sharing needles on the street. We've seen patients with active liver failure from chronic alcohol abuse. And I think particularly heartbreaking is the number of mothers that are addicted, and their babies, of course, are now addicted and have NAS syndrome. And so these are very expensive problems for the community and for the providers to try to take care of all these increasing numbers of patients. And I think to try to resolve it, as we've heard, I think we need to work very quickly to get a regional psychiatric ED onboard. I know we're working on it. Sometimes these patients can be stabilized very quickly on an outpatient basis. If they come to the hospital and get stabilized, we're taking up vital space. We're taking a lot more time to get them to psychiatric facilities. And so I think that, that program needs to be funded, and it needs to get up ASAP. We've already heard about the development and need of transitional housing. We concur, absolutely need to have temporary housing and supportive services for these folks that they can get, the multi-dimensional collaborative interventions that they need. This is not an easy one-solution problem to solve. I think if we have some subsequent rapid rehousing, where we have rental assistance programs and so forth for the patients and for the house, for the citizens going forward, it will further help us have the time to get them into long-term situations. We've got a lot of pilots working with Carm and working with Samaritan Place to do this. It's proven helpful. We just need to get more money to do it. So I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Tammy Snyder.
Thank you very much. I am not Tammy Snyder. She was unable to join us this evening and asked that I come on her behalf. I am Jeanette Bergen. I am of leadership in both child help and Care Cuts. I see both ends of our community, from the abused children to the homeless. And what we seek in our area is to home. The definition of homelessness is without housing. We need more housing. We have got to have more low-barrier. That means you can be mentally ill. That means you can have substance abuse so that you can still sleep inside. Sleeping inside, having heat, having water should not be an option that can be withheld because you're mentally ill or because you have an addiction issue. We can address addiction, and we can address mental illness once we can get you from freezing to death. So let's start with low-barrier housing. Care Cuts collaborates with multiple community resources. We are so thankful for the co-response team. We are so thankful for the mental health treatment that we see, or the mental health training that we see our first responders have, because it totally tailors how they respond to the clients that we serve at Care Cuts. We are a community resource that stands in the gap for those that may have addiction, that may have mental illness, but are definitely homeless, or at least on the cusp and at risk. With that position, we see what happens when people are in crisis. All of this could begin to be addressed with more transitional housing, more affordable housing, more supportive housing with case management services. But first, we have got to have a low threshold entry to get off the streets. Only then can we program towards success. At Care Cuts, we work with a whopping $196,000 budget. You have a furrowed brow. We're proud of that. We started out on my credit card. So let me tell you, it wasn't at $196. So what I can tell you is that we're serving approximately 400 people a week, that we have provided over 90,000 meals since we began. The haircut is the carrot to get them to come. Only then can the mentoring services, the case management services, the resources be accessed. Thus far, we can account for 500 people that we've gotten off the streets into housing, into treatment, into a better life. And do you know how many staff we have? One. And we started that July. Before, we were 100% volunteer, and we are still 100% donation. Thank you very much. Feel free to pass the plate. But please know that without the opportunity for low-barrier housing, none of this can begin. Nothing starts until we have a roof and four walls. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Akers, followed by Stephanie Burridge, Elizabeth Rowland, and Kim Wilson Owen.
So I'm obviously not David Akers. I'm here to speak on his behalf. He wasn't able to make it. My name is Katie Hanson. I also am a volunteer with Care Cuts. I would say, just my experience with volunteering there for the past year is that the emergency services and response teams aren't really good or bad. I can't really speak on that. I would speak with the fact that the homeless that we deal with have substance abuse and mental health disorders. So we're dealing with a collaboration of all three things. So like, everybody here is speaking on different subjects, but we just need to bring it all into one. There's, there are the whole, it's always an issue. I'm also a veteran of the military. I was in the Navy, and I've noticed that at Care Cuts, and we don't really have a lot of services for homeless veterans, because you don't really want to differentiate with substance abuse or mental disorder. So bringing that in as another option and an opportunity for Care Cuts to elaborate with others. The big taken is, or the big thing I would think of is that why aren't we working together? Why is, you know, the, the things I've noticed volunteering is that, you know, you, there, that's where we have a stopgap. Like if we're reaching out to one service to another, they're like, they can't do anything, or their hands are tied. And it's like, why don't we have a phone book that we allow everybody to be able to use it from? And I think what we could do to alternatively improve it is that just being able to communicate and have an open communication between all of the is just being able to communicate and have an open communication between all of the services. Sorry, I'm really nervous. And I got told about 10 minutes ago that I was going to be doing this. So I'm just going to go back to my notes. I got three minutes and, I know, I apologize.
Doing fine.
I've encountered various responses from the police and the health department when they do come and respond at CareCuts. The cops that come on Sundays, the police officers, they're so sweet. They're so respectful. They speak to them, they talk to them just like they would if they were their brother or cousin. What I've realized is that this could be your brother or your aunt or your sister, and you don't know where they are and you can't find them. And CareCuts gives them an opportunity to have an address. Maybe you can get ahold of them there. Maybe you can see them there and have. So I would say that we get a lot of mixed attitudes when it comes to overdose and addiction with the Narcan or different things when it comes. So just having that opportunity and having resources where we're able to help the ones if they are overdosing. Like I am a volunteer. I'm not certified. I don't have any degrees in mental health or substance abuse, but I've witnessed it. I've been a part of it. I've seen it. I've watched friends die and it's like you couldn't do anything. So I feel like having trainings for civilians, like why? We should all know how to use Narcan. We should all know how to save someone's life regardless of not having a certification or if I'm not wearing a badge. Like if I see you dying at a gas station, I should know how to train you or how to save you. So, you know, offering training classes for people that just want to help, that just want to be able to do something. So it's like, how do I do that efficiently and not kill somebody by trying to help them because they're dying? It just seems that the level of support depends on a specific circumstance. If you fit this criteria, then we'll help you. But that doesn't necessarily work. Nobody fits in a box. Everybody's different. So I feel like that would be something that we could look at is it's not just case by case or we can't just throw them in something. It's, and then also something that we could look into is having like a dedicated mental health person with the police officers when they're responding to those things. Because police officers are also not licensed psychiatrists. So you don't know what someone else is going through or what, if that's a mental break or are they high on meth? Are they going through a paranoid schizophrenic episode, also high on meth? Like, I don't know how to respond to that. So, you know, having those free trainings for anybody and anybody that wants to come out and help and do something and make a difference. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Stephanie Burridge?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Burridge. I am the CEO of the YWCA of Knoxville in the Tennessee Valley. We're located at 420 West Clinch in downtown Knoxville. Thank you for granting us this opportunity to come out and talk to you tonight about the emergency response system in our city. Our organization oversees a transitional housing initiative catering to women. And currently, we could house 58 women. We have 17, partially because of lack of funding for us to continue services at the level that this community needs. Our facility addresses a spectrum of mental health and substance abuse-related challenges among our clients, making mental health crisis a common and daily occurrence. Since in the past year, we have engaged with the co-response team five times. And I want to share our experiences during those five calls. Out of the five requests for co-response support, only two have resulted in a dispatch of co-response staff to our location. The remaining instances were, we were informed that the co-response unit was unavailable and leading only to a uniformed officer responding. On both occasions, when the co-response unit was dispatched, we had to wait two to three hours for them to show up. Imagine if you're having a medical emergency and it's taking two to three hours for an ambulance to arrive to take care of you. Our staff during those two to three hours is doing the best that they can do to help manage these clients and our care that are in the middle of a mental health crisis. Despite having a really good rapport with Knoxville Police Department, in the past, we've even had officers who stopped by just to check on some of our residents. They're not equipped or trained to deal with these high mental crisis situations. For law enforcement to navigate such situations successfully, they would need additional education, almost like having them go back to school to obtain a social work or a postgraduate degree. Responding to mental health crises demands expertise and specialized training, underscoring the need for an alternate response team. Several of our clients have also had traumatic experiences with law enforcement, leading us to utilize co-response more sparingly. The presence of law enforcement sometimes escalates the situation and it results in further trauma notation for the residents in our building. An alternate response team coupled with an increased number of available social workers would substantially benefit our clients and our staff as well. It would also take law enforcement out of the response where they could then focus on the other matters that they'd need to focus on in the city. It would help reduce response time and offer round-the-clock support. Because as you know, mental health crises do not happen only Monday through Friday, nine to five. As we are getting ready to expand our program, we will be able to house 78 women downtown. We're not going to be able to do that with more support from the city because of the funding that it takes to continue with the programs like we have. However, with the support of the city, our program has a 90% success rate. The women who come into our transitional housing program, when they leave two years later, they have a 90% chance of staying housed, of staying employed, and of staying clean and focusing on having a stable life after they leave our program. We are not in a position this year, because of the renovation, to head an alternate response program. But if there is a possibility of an advisory team, I have staff myself, we would love to be a part of that advisory team to look at further options to develop this response team. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Rowland.
My name is Elizabeth Rowland. I live at 615 Balsam Drive, 37918. Today, I will speak about my experience supporting loved ones with mental illness who have had unproductive encounters with emergency services. I'm also here representing Knoxville Heart to provide an update on what we are working on to advance alternative response in Knoxville and how we would like to partner with the city and others in that effort. So first, I'll share a couple stories. One day, I was at work and my loved one called me extremely upset. This loved one has several diagnoses such as PTSD and schizoaffective disorder. They had been experiencing an ongoing challenge related to their living environment that was triggering anger and hopelessness. They called me because they knew that they didn't want to respond to the situation in a way that could dangerously escalate it, but they were very angry and needed an outlet. Their therapist was not available. Similar calls came in subsequent days. Fortunately, my boss was very understanding and I was, but I was not equipped to provide appropriate care for my loved one. They needed someone trained in how to de-escalate mental health crises. They also needed someone with whom they felt safe. As I sought out resources to support my loved one, I called the Mobile Crisis Unit hotline. The first time they spoke with my loved one, it seemed to go pretty well. But the second or the third time became less productive because the job of Mobile Crisis Unit, I learned, isn't to help people through mental health crises. It's really to identify if someone in a mental health crisis needs to be institutionalized. My loved one started sensing this through the questions being asked and then no longer felt safe. I have also seen firsthand my loved one engaging with police during a triggered moment. One day, I went to their house and a pair of police officers was there, one officer inside and one outside. I learned that the one police officer was waiting outside because they had authoritatively told my loved one to stop cussing and the situation had escalated. Somehow, it was determined that the one officer should leave the situation and wait outside. My loved one needed someone to listen, not someone to tell them what to do or who uses their authority to subdue them. Another aspect of this is that my loved one doesn't trust most police officers to keep them safe. That day and other subsequent days, my loved one asked me to stay until the police officers were gone, to stay as a white ally, to be a witness for my loved one who is black. Think about that. If you were a person experiencing a mental health crisis, do you want your emergency responders to be someone who instills fear in you? Do you want, do you want your emergency responder to be someone who might take you to jail or institutionalize you? Or worse, someone who might shoot you? As a result of these experiences, I will not call 911 or co-response if my loved ones are experiencing a mental health crisis because I know that my loved ones don't want the police to come. So where does that leave me? Who do I call for help? In Knoxville, there's no option. This is why I volunteer with Knoxville Heart and advocate to establish alternative response teams in Knoxville. I want to be able to call someone who can help my loved ones feel safe, not someone who is going to trigger fear. I want to call someone whose professional training is focused on mental health, not someone whose training is focused on controlling or punishing. I want to call a civilian. I want to call a civilian, not someone in a police uniform, not someone carrying a deadly weapon. In short, I want someone who will treat my loved ones with mental illness using a public health perspective, not a criminal justice perspective. In past council member, in discussions with Pat, Dad Gumm, in past discussions with council members, Heart heard repeatedly that council wants to see data related to the gap in service that alternative response would fill. What does the data show? So Heart has set out to answer that question. From our discussions with stakeholders so far, it seems that data exists on 911 calls coming in and data exists on the results of emergency responders responding to those calls, but the incoming and the results data aren't connected in the systems. So it's hard to determine the gaps in service. Heart has begun partnership discussions with researchers from the University of Tennessee in order to connect these two sets of data and analyze them for trends and gaps. We will be applying for a grant with the University of Tennessee Community University Research Collaboration Initiative, known as Quirky. And we're also exploring ways to partner with the new Appalachian Justice Research Center, or AJRC. The research needs identified by Heart include three main phases. The first phase is to complete a community needs assessment. The second, to analyze 911 calls and outcomes from those calls. The third is to look at what model of alternative response would be best for Knoxville. It's obvious that there is community interest and still many questions about having an alternative response team in Knoxville. We would like to echo a call made last year by Councilmember Parker that the city work, the city work with community members and others to establish a task force to explore the possibility of an alternative response team in, excuse me, in Knoxville. We would encourage City Council to make the creation of a task force a priority. I'd be pleased to answer further questions on Heart's research plans after this since my time is definitely up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Kim Wilson, Kim Wilson Owen. Kim Wilson Owen. Oh, okay. After Ms. Owen will be Tyler Givens, Shanoa Shenandoah, and Adam Walsh.
I'm Kim Wilson Owen. I am at 203 South Chilhauie Drive in Knoxville, 37914. As far as how my family has been affected or has served in these realms, my family has served as combat veterans, EMTs, search and rescue, ER and psychiatric nursing, mental health services profession, working for nonprofit and government to include safety and law enforcement, and as volunteers in true dedication to public safety and decency. In addition, one of our loved ones was missing and homeless for many years. He studied hard, stayed, struggled hard to stay clean. He ultimately died of his addiction. We have also lived with the devastating PTSD and addiction of a combat veteran. Reliable data on the benefits of alternative response programs to taxpayers, first responders, and citizens in crisis is abundant. Amelia Parker's resolution is a result of long hours, years of experience, research, planning, and respectful, caring, hard work with the people who need proper crisis response the most. Delay in getting the benefits in Council, Councilor Parker's resolution to Knoxville's first responders, taxpayers, and vulnerable citizens comes at great cost. American Canon's 2023-24 Budget Summary on the city website states, "Public safety is job one. People deserve to be and feel safe in Knoxville. Public safety is a core, basic function of government. And this budget invests in the fire, police and fire departments and supports and partnerships that address urgent public safety needs." I am just a private citizen at this time with experience. If it were true that public safety were job one, Knoxville would have a fully funded alternative response program. Qualified, qualified, degreed, paid professionals would already be in official and truly collegial teamwork with police, fire, rescue, and other first responders. If public safety were job one, we would be using that ounce of prevention that saves a pound of cure. The city's outcomes say that public safety is not job one. In just one of far too many examples, Lisa Edwards died in police custody pleading for help while police mocked and ignored her pleas. In another, Knoxville found out, I believe in December, that in July, a city truck ran over and killed one of our unsheltered neighbors. Our city's response to the needs of residents in crisis is beset by cronyism, forced submission to religious values, secular nonprofits with little to no city funding, exclusion of residents in need of addiction services, limitations on who can enter shelters when, improper demands of local tax-paying volunteers, and lack of true planning and dependable funding. With a few commendable exceptions, city officials ignore the needs of our neighbors and taxpayers in crisis. In cases where city employees are charged with ensuring shelter, safety, and disaster preparedness in response, those commendable employees' hands are tied. And this is just on a normal day. As the crisis of snow and deadly sub-zero temperatures unfolded last week, I looked at the city's org chart within the budget. Safety and emergency preparedness are listed under funding and departments. Yet, to my knowledge, as a public citizen, I did not hear of the city providing space, funding, staff, or food to our unsheltered neighbors. As the crisis wore on and volunteers became exhausted, I did understand that that city and county employees were able to come to help. Public, public citizens, taxpayers, normal people have paid taxes. Public safety is a core, basic function of government. Volunteers assisting their neighbors have paid taxes for emergency services the city does not offer. Yet, they must offer additional time and resources or watch their unsheltered neighbors live in misery on a normal day and freeze to death or drown in weather events. Public safety is a core, basic function of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tyler Givens.
My name is Tyler Givens and I had a homeless camp in my yard at 1823 Explorer Lane for several months in 2021. So my primary experience with So my primary experience with emergency services in Knoxville, and by that I mostly mean police, is watching police destroy or threaten to destroy the property of Knoxville's poorest citizens. I've watched officers tell people that 10 minutes was long enough to pack up all their belongings and get off of property during a rainstorm. Police officers came to my house a couple times while neighbors were camping in my yard, but it's not illegal to allow people to camp on your private property. And even though the city codes department eventually came and threatened to remove them from my property and do damage with heavy equipment and charged me for the privilege, the officers left without even opening my door or talking to me because, again, police can't help. They can't do anything with the homeless. They didn't offer any resources. They didn't offer any place for any of these people to stay. They just came, I told them to fuck off, and they left because that's your right as an American citizen. I've also watched a lot of body camera video of KPD officers violating the rights of homeless people illegally searching their tents or harassing them and demanding ID, telling them to get out of town. I watched Officer Travis Schuler choke slam a homeless man to the ground because he didn't provide his social security number. You never have to provide your social security number to an officer, by the way. I've watched Officer Joseph Adams assault cuff and berate a man for 15 minutes because he looked homeless and he had missed his ride to work. A couple years ago, on the day that Anthony Thompson Jr. was murdered, I was at the KPD headquarters watching a video of rookie officer Jasmine Reed illegally searching a backpack inside a tent while they were trying to arrest a homeless person. The backpack in the tent did not belong to the person they were trying to arrest. A couple days ago, I watched an experienced Officer Jasmine Reed give a ticket to a woman for jaywalking, for crossing between Carm and the Day Space without going to one of the two crosswalks there. Officer Reed then took the clean needles given to this woman by our state-sponsored and approved syringe services program here in Knox County and threw them in the trash. This is an example of a Knox County police officer, just in the daily performance of their duties, actively working against efforts to reduce disease in our homeless population. Police should not at all be responding to mental health, substance abuse, and homelessness Thank you. Well, when I think of what additional services we could provide, I think that instead of city codes or the police department coming to threatening to damage my property and run these people off and destroy their possessions, somebody could have sent some help. If somebody from a neighborhood calls and says, "Somebody's got a homeless camp in their backyard," why would you send the cops instead of social workers? One of the neighbors, after the camp was dispersed, stayed in my garage for a while because they couldn't see him anymore, so I got away with that for longer. He did not have a smartphone, and he had trouble accessing online services, so we went to the office after office of all these, you know, the public housing we have here in Knoxville, and they all turned him away and told him that there was years-long waits anyway, and he had to use the online portal. No help was available for him. If we didn't leave the sheltering of our homeless to religious charity services, maybe there wouldn't be so many people sleeping in tents. I've asked a lot of people what they think of the shelters, you know, a lot of homeless folks, what they think of the shelters, and they all say the same thing about basically all of them. You're not allowed to keep your belongings. The small amount of items you are allowed to keep are very likely to be stolen because there's no security, and it only takes one bad apple inside that place to start stealing from everybody there and cause all kinds of problems. So it's not that the majority of the people are bad, it's that they are in unsecure situations, and that's the only place we're allowing them. They're more secure in their tents, in this nasty weather, than they are in shelters where they're going to have everything taken away from them or, you know, be forced to throw away half their belongings before they can even walk through the door. People are separated from their partners, they're exposed to degrading experiences. One lady told me that to access the shower, she had to walk from the dressing room across a public hallway in a bath towel to get back and forth between the shower because there was no changing room next to the shower. So, you know, I've also heard all kinds of wilder accusations than that about what happens in a lot of our shelters and homeless facilities we have, but, you know, I can't confirm anything, so I won't repeat it, but I've never heard any homeless person say anything good about any of our religious shelters. So we definitely need more services there, and we don't need the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Shanoa Shenandoah?
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Shanoa Shenandoah. I'm a psychiatric, mental health, nurse practitioner, board certified, and I am the owner and operator of Family Dynamics Behavioral Health. However, I am here to speak to you tonight as a parent and not as a mental health provider. In 2017, I adopted a 12-year-old child from DCS custody. He has been diagnosed, he is now 19, he has been diagnosed with bipolar disorder, ADHD, PTSD, and anxiety. He had a very traumatic childhood, and we have done years of therapy, medication management, and I do, he is at a very stable point now in his life. However, a year ago, at approximately 11:30 at night, he was experiencing a mixed episode from his bipolar disorder. He had suicidal thoughts with plan. That late at night, I had no other options but to call 911 because mobile services are not available to come out. He was, I want to stress, he was no danger to anyone but himself. He has never been violent in a manic depressive or mixed episode to me or anyone. I called 911, and two officers came out to my home. Instead of being taken for further evaluation, taken to CSU Peninsula, he was tased twice, handcuffed, and arrested. Upon learning my profession and requesting a supervisor officer come to the scene, they agreed to take him to BHUC instead of jail. Without my knowledge of BHUC or the position that I hold, he would have gone to jail. He was, when I called the officers, they came in, he was sitting on the sofa, looking down at his phone. The officers asked him to stop looking at his phone and to look at them while they were talking to him. He refused to look up, and he refused to put his phone down. He's a kid. He never tried to hit them or anything, but because he wouldn't put the phone down, one of the officers went to him while he was sitting on the sofa, tried to grab the phone out of his hand. He resisted. The other officer took out his taser, and I said, "Please do not tase him, he is not doing anything." They tased him. He struggled because they were trying to just grab the phone out of his hand, and they tased him a second time. Because they considered him struggling and resisting, they then handcuffed him while he was laying, face down on the floor, and dragged him to the backseat of their car while he was sobbing and crying to me for help. As if I, as a mental health, board certified, mental health practitioner, cannot get mental health services for my son with the knowledge and the connections I have, how can I expect other people in the community to get the help that they need? I do support alternative response, as it has been shown to be effective for decades. The data is there to support it. You don't need more data. We have the data. It's there. Police, in the meantime, police need to be trained, especially in trauma response. Victims with PTSD and mental health do not always respond the same. Trauma response is different when you're dealing with PTSD. We are already dealing with a society with police mistrust, and we are, sorry, we are building even more mistrust with the police. We are increasing a person with trauma, we are increasing their trauma. They already have PTSD, they've already been abused, they've already been beaten by their parents as children, and that we're allowing people to come in who are supposed to protect them, to tase them, handcuff them, and drag them out of their home. It's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Adam Walsh. Mr. Walsh is joining us from a virtual connection. Hello, Mr. Walsh, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, I can.
Okay. You're not in the room. I don't know if you can see the clock or not. You have five minutes. I'll give you a heads up when you get down to one, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
All right, go ahead.
Councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Adam Walsh. I lead Development and External Relations for CAHOOTS, which is an acronym for Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets here in Eugene, Oregon. CAHOOTS was founded in 1989, and we are one of the 10 wings of the Whitebird Clinic, which is our parent nonprofit. CAHOOTS operates a mobile integrated health model in the communities of Eugene and our sister city across the highway, Springfield. And the CAHOOTS model consists of a crisis worker and a medic on a van, a large Sprinter van that has the capability for transportation of clients as well. So in Eugene, we strive to provide 36 hours of service in a 24-hour period, so that looks like one van being available 24 hours a day, and between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., a second van on the streets to provide extra coverage, as we have found that statistically those are the boundaries of our peak hours. In the city of Springfield, we also provide 24-hour coverage in that city as well. So we respond to all sorts of calls. In our community, we are the third branch of public safety, so we have police, we have fire, EMS, and we also have CAHOOTS. Types of calls that we respond to really run the gamut of mental and physical health, so this can be welfare checks, wound care, basic first aid, we take vitals, we check blood sugars, we respond to family disputes, we respond to individuals who are experiencing all sorts of crises, including suicidal ideation or homicidal ideation, as well as providing death notifications when those events emerge. The average call volume that we've seen over the past three years has been about 16,500 calls per year, and the teams that we have are dispatched from our local public safety answering point. So there's a couple of different ways that a person can receive our services or different ways that will end up showing up on scene. A person can call 911, a person can call 988, a person can also call the police department non-emergency line, and so there's no wrong door to be able to access our services. Now, once one of those calls comes in, it goes to dispatch, and the dispatcher will collect all the information that they need about what's going on on the scene, and it's at the point of dispatch that the appropriate resource is decided. So either we will be sent solo or sometimes in conjunction with a police response and/or a fire response. A classic example here is in the event of a suicide where the police will respond to that incident for a death investigation, and we will also be responding to take up the crisis side for any individuals, family, friends, et cetera, that may also be on scene to provide that crisis support and de-escalation. That component of being integrated into the public safety system is really fundamental to our model and the lines of communication that we have with other first responders, so that our teams are on the police radios, so that if something is happening or we pick up a call, if we need to have some sort of assistance one way or another, whether it would be a police backup, which is extremely rare, or an ambulance to be able to transport someone to a higher level of care, we don't have to pick up the phone and call, we already have the radios, you know, we can communicate seamlessly with other responders.
Mr. Walsh, I failed my duty to remind you about your one minute remaining, so I'll give you 30 more seconds if you could finish up.
Oh, sure, I can do that. We serve all demographics in our community. Many of the folks that we serve are unhoused, but we absolutely respond to all sorts of calls and all individuals. And I can say that the value that's seen in our community for the work that we do is in the fact that the contracts that we have with the city of Eugene and the city of Springfield have been continuously renewed year over year, and that we take calls that, you know, a police officer doesn't need to respond to, and also the fire EMS, you know, it's not acute enough for them to need to be there too. So that is also a big part of what we do, and appreciate the time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. All right. Next up is Joy Ellis, followed by Ally Cohn, Rick Roach, and Michelle Ward. There's Joy Ellis here. Oh, thanks.
My name is Joy Ellis, and I reside in 37921. Come to you today just to share some experiences that I've had with the police in mental health-related One time I got fired from UTK. They just said that I was let go, and I didn't have any other source of income. I was homeless at the time, and I didn't have any transportation, so I just walked on down to the Casey's and locked myself in the bathroom there. I didn't know what to do, and I had the cops called on me, and what the cops did was force a confession out of me, hauled me off in a car, and refused to take me to the hospital of my choice. There, I was yelled at, I was placed on a dirty floor with no food or water even offered for seven hours, and a police officer actually came with a needle to threaten to sedate me when I started screaming. Police have, police are here to just make sure that business is going as normal. They don't have any place in mental health-related emergencies because what I have experienced is just fear. I don't know where I'm going, I don't know what they're going to do to me. I'm just terrified. And as someone who has been, who suffers from PTSD, I have 911 called on me or to call 911 maybe once every two or three months. I would feel much safer, much, much safer, calling civilians rather than cops to come deal with me in a triggered state. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ally Cohn.
Hi, my name is Ally Cohn.
Hi, my name is Ally Cohn. I reside at 3406 Orlando Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 3797. I am here tonight to read the following statement on behalf of a Knoxville Heart member. Hello, I am writing this statement on behalf of my family and in memory of my father who died while in police custody. I have chosen to keep his identity anonymous because this is still a very sensitive topic for us. I am sharing this as a member of Knoxville Heart and as a Knoxville community member impacted by policing. In 2017, my father died in a KCSO transport van. He had no prior arrests, was an outstanding community member and business owner, and has been missed by countless friends, family, and golf buddies ever since. A community member called 911 after witnessing my father drive off the road and crash into a ditch. When the officers arrived at the scene, he had urinated on himself, could not support his own body weight, and had slurred speech. He then vomited on himself in the patrol car. These are official notes from the arresting officer. He was arrested for driving while intoxicated. When they attempted to load him into the transport van, he could not stand and he fell face forward onto the ground, resulting in face bruising. Since he could not hold himself up inside the communal portion of the transport van, they put him into the cramped, isolated side compartment alone. Medical attention was never given to him and he was never checked on. Other detainees in the transport van were upset and expressed concern for him to the officer. My dad then spent four hours alone in the transport van. During these final hours of his life, the officers had even stopped to pick up another detainee at the former St. Mary's Hospital location. Imagine that. He was experiencing a medical emergency that was ignored, was at a medical facility that could have saved his life, and yet no one felt enough concern for his humanity to ask for help that was less than 10 feet away. By the time they arrived at the detention center, many hours after he was initially detained, he was unresponsive. It was too late. They had done absolutely nothing. There was no concern or care towards him, no medical support, no compassion. When we finally received the autopsy report four months later, we realized this death was preventable. While he was also intoxicated, my father was experiencing a treatable medical emergency that ultimately led to his death after officers neglected his health and safety. I asked the investigators why the officers didn't call for medical treatment when they saw a senior citizen who couldn't walk, talk, or hold himself up and who had urinated and vomited on himself. They told me that officers do not like to take their detainees to the hospital because it makes it harder to book them later. The irony of this is outrageous and devastating because they had stopped at St. Mary's already. How easy it would have been to ask for emergency assistance if only that had been a concern, if only my dad was seen as someone who needed help instead of immediately being criminalized and dismissed. This was one of the hardest things for me to hear. My father did not get the medical attention he deserved because that would have made it harder for the booking process. It would have made it harder to punish him. So instead, he died. The months and years after his death were filled with questions, anger, and grief. Through my questioning, I discovered alternative response teams. I learned about how cities had been dispatching these teams to a wide variety of calls, including substance use, just like my dad's situation. If my dad had been responded to by a team with a medical professional, he would likely be here today. If the officers were concerned more with his health and safety than making sure he was booked in jail, he might have met his grandchildren. My dad's story is full of what-ifs. It's why I am so passionate that we find better ways to respond to people in need. All people have inherent dignity and worth and deserve safe, compassionate care in their darkest times. It's in his memory that I write this statement. Please support alternative response in Knoxville. I know it will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Rick Roach.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. What is your experience with emergency services related to mental health, substance use, and homelessness in Knoxville? I've been homeless, I've used drugs, and I've had mental health issues. Okay? Mental health. On my way to work, year 2000, I was on Paxil. Decided to come off of it because it was killing me. Had an episode, pulled over right at the intersection, 275 and 40. Did not want to engage with the police, not in the state that I was in. Eventually, my wife, my son contacted them, contacted the nurse at the internist, not a psychiatrist, but the internist. That's another issue. And they told me what to do. Or they told them what to do to get me into a safe place. Because I knew then I could not deal with the police department or they weren't going to be prepared to deal with me. Substance use, done a lot of drugs. Homelessness, again, been homeless recently, within the last 10 years. But here's another part. I have enough presence to have been appointed to the Neighborhood Advisory Council for the city of Knoxville. I have enough presence to be appointed to the Knoxville Knox County Food Policy Council. I have enough presence to be, to have been a board member of Tennessee Healthcare Campaign, the only consumer organization in terms of healthcare for the state of Tennessee. You're going to have to do your jobs. Okay? You have this chance. You have this chance and not to play games. Also, I'm a member, I call it associate member of Heart, Knoxville Heart. And here's what we've gone through when I've been on our collaborative calls. Too many games are being played. We don't need that. We don't need this. This is too important. Too many games. Okay? We need to be straightforward. We don't need to be negotiating behind the scenes. Everything you guys are involved in, in terms of mental health care, emergency response should be public. We should know what you're saying and thinking, not have it come out at the last moment when really nothing can be done because that indicates that you all have an agenda that you want to carry out. Okay? And I'm talking about process here because if you also have a priority in your minds, collectively, in your minds, that you will obligate the resources. Because I'm, I don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear those stories. I don't want to hear these stories. I don't want to hear them. I'm tired of hearing these stories. I'm tired of watching and knowing I can't do anything because I've picked up enough homeless people and given them rides. I've taken food down there enough. I'm tired of that. Our response is inadequate. I'm tired of seeing people do their drugs in the open with security present and nothing can be done about it. I'm tired of that. If we have one thing, I would love for you all to sign a statement that you all will obligate $10 million to first start with alternative response, to add it to the mix of co-responder. And what they've described, people have described about co-responder not responding is true. Okay? It's true. Period. Let's get that straight. But let's, as, I used to be in the Navy. Okay? What did we say? All hands on deck? All hands on deck. Okay? No agendas? Just take care of the people of Knoxville first and foremost? And then maybe things will get better. You all have to prioritize. Say you're going to obligate the resources first and foremost. Because if you don't, it's only going to get worse. And when it gets worse, it's going to be one of yours. It may have already been one of yours. And you all don't want to talk about it and deal with it. Okay? But when it is one of yours, don't come tapping somebody on the shoulder saying, "Help." Because that's too late.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Ward.
Hello, all. My name is Michelle, and I'm a third-year student at the University of Tennessee Knoxville. It's a pleasure to meet you all tonight, and I would like to thank everyone who issued a story. We are gathered to discuss a reform of first responses in Knoxville, particularly a non-police alternative response in response to nonviolent emergency calls. As all of you can attest to, dispatchers tend to turn to the police department first in emergency. Although it's almost impossible to contest that the system has done some good, I am of the belief that the observed and documented dangers far outweigh the benefits of this system. In order to understand it, we should discuss them in the context of psychiatric and medical care. In recent years, psychiatric care has been among the most pressing of public health issues. I'd like to credit USA Facts for aggregating and reporting these statistics. According to the South Dakota Unified Justice System, 10% of all police calls pertain to wellness checks or other psychiatric crises. According to the Crasher Family Foundation, suicide in Tennessee was a second-leading cause for death in adolescents in 2020. And over 20%, that is over one-fifth, of high school students reported serious suicidal ideation in the year 2021. And accordingly, Tennessee has 16% of mental health workers required to meet the needs of the general population. Nationally, we only have 27%. There is absolutely no doubt that some level of intervention is critical to the prevention of suicide and aid in mental health crises. But it's widely acknowledged that the majority of patients in need of care are nonviolent and pose no risk to police officers. So I have to ask, why are patients treated as if they are? According to the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, mental health patients were 16/10s more likely to be fatally injured in police encounters. In a system that is meant to save a patient's life, allowing preventable deaths, as we have seen previously, is unacceptable, especially because people of color and those in the LGBT are targeted, dispersionally targeted. This is not an isolated incident, and the system is so prone to exploitation. It's not at all in common for patients to experience further distress upon apprehension by police forces. The distress that has prompted a crisis to begin with, in an instance where they are in dire, fragile states, why are they subjected to more fear and peril? Why are we punished for experiencing crises? And I'd like to close with the testimony of my own alongside others who have had similar experiences. On the 17th of November, 2023, I experienced a mental health crisis that necessitated medical intervention. While I thank the Knoxville Police Department for their immediate assistance, it would be remiss to withhold my many criticisms of their care and handling during previous hospital visits for issues pertaining to my physical health. I was informed of my condition and at least allowed communication with my immediate family regarding this. Police presence was minimal, and patients were made to feel comforted in their times of need. Yet, when I was admitted to the same hospital in the same city for a psychiatric crisis, I didn't have the right to be informed. I wasn't conscious upon arrival to the hospital. So when I awoke, I didn't know how or when I arrived. I had to find out from someone else that I was dragged in the back, in the back of a police car. I had to find out from my own medical records that I had to obtain my self-help, how long I was out, what condition I was in, how I was treated, because I wasn't told anything. When I woke up, the first thing I remember was the only way I had to communicate with my loved ones being taken away from me. I was in a dirty, I was in a dirty room, going in and out of consciousness for about 12 hours. And for 24 hours, I was in a locked room in solitude. I was let out maybe one time. I was barely able to access basic necessities, such as the use of a restroom. I never had a history of violence or a criminal record, and yet I was kept in isolation for most of my stay and left uninformed. And yet, in spite of this, I think of my own experience as one of the better ones. During my 36 hours in the hospital, I listened to police and medical doctors berate patients under their care. As many have said, if their, if the patient's concerns were even acknowledged, personnel would laugh amongst themselves, saying, "Oh, don't, don't take that person seriously." Regardless of whether or not the patients were cooperative, there was never a reason to have berated them nor advised police to dismiss their concerns. I also want to note that this isn't exclusive to myself or the facility I was in. I've heard many testimonies with a personal friend of mine, a transgender woman, being sedated. Many people have discussed threats of sedation, and this woman was sedated and kept in similar conditions to me. We didn't forget Lisa Edwards, who died in police, who died in police custody. Her final moments were spent being gerat, and that never had to happen. Her death and those, and those previously were entirely preventable. This isn't exclusive to one or a few officers, but it's something systemic. I don't doubt that there are good officers, but to law enforcement, you have no place in incidents where law has not been broken. For that reason, I believe it is necessary to reduce, if not alleviate, police presence in psychiatric or medical settings. I urge the city of Knoxville to consider implementation of this system. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Counsel, that concludes the public speaking portion of our agenda. Now we'll make some time for discussion among council members or questions, so. Councilman Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to thank everybody who had come and spoken with us and shared your experiences this morning, or this evening, I'm sorry. I think it's difficult sometimes, especially when you're, have experienced some trauma or you're speaking about loved ones' experiences. It can be very difficult, even if you're not having those things happen, to come and speak to an audience behind you and know you're on, you know, television and have people, you know, representatives sitting up here and listening. But I think it's really important that you came and shared. And so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you doing that. I don't think that's, it's not easy. Discuss, having discussions about trauma and mental health is also not easy. There's too much, even though I think there's been some improvement, there's too much stigma associated with talking about mental health. And we have to really free ourselves from that and be able to talk about people who are experiencing crisis and getting them care. I really do appreciate hearing from the providers and hearing overwhelmingly that we can do both alternative response and co-response. There's been good results from co-response, but we need them to be 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and there's not enough teams. We also need alternative response to be able to respond to, to different types of responses that involve crisis. So I was just really glad to hear from everybody doing that. And I'm going to continue to work on trying to make sure both of those things can happen and that we can get a mental health hospital here in Knoxville. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah. I hate to put someone on the spot, but I have a couple of different questions. First off, Ms. Klein, I see you're still here. I don't know, are you the only one from VMC here? Okay. Can we get a, there were some questions about the needs for low-barrier shelter, which we have at the foyer. How many beds are at the foyer currently?
There are 40. We will be closing in March.
Can you tell us a little bit about the closing? Because I will tell you what counsel knows. I don't want to speak for my colleagues here, but an individual from the public signed up to speak at the podium here and pronounced that it was closing, that we should find out what was going on. And we all looked at each other, and the mayor said, and the person who spoke said that it was closing because the city was pulling the funding. And the mayor said that wasn't true. And I have now heard from other sources that the lease isn't being renewed from this space. So this is why, I'm sorry, I did not mean to put you on the spot. But then Representative Johnson, state rep, spoke with me about it and said people were reaching out to her and asking her questions. And so I told her what happened at a council meeting here. So what's swirling around is rumors, and I would like some hard facts about what's going on with the foyer because a low-barrier shelter is definitely critically needed. And the conversations that I've had with Dr. Spangler in the past was ways to expand it and how to support adding more beds and new locations. So, sorry, if you could answer, because...
I can. So the city is not funding us anymore. That, we got, we got funding for other programs, but we're not allowed to... but we're not allowed to continue to have the requirements of people working towards housing. And so no funding from the city can be allocated to the foyer.
What do you mean no funding can be allocated or you can't require people to be working? So now that was part of the condition, my understanding of it.
We were told that we would not be funded if we kept that as part of our program.
So right now, so my understanding, having gone out along with social workers at times and how the program started, because I was on council when we voted to fund it. We went there prior to, while the space was being built out and then saw it open right as COVID started with reduced beds. And the way I understand that it works is social workers go out and meet people who need housing, people in the camps. They come up to VMC, they work with caseworkers and as long as they agree to work on housing, they can have bed space, stay with their partner, have their pet, do not have to be clean, can be inebriated, all of these are realities and make it a low barrier shelter. And so are you saying that someone at the city told you that as long, is this a fun? I mean, I don't, I don't understand.
We were told that, that is correct. We were told that we would not receive funding if we continued to have the requirement that people were working towards housing.
So you're saying that the city was asking you guys to just let people use the low barrier shelter, but not require them to be working on housing?
That is correct.
So it's not that the city said, we won't give you money anymore, period in the story. I'm just, I'm trying to understand and I guess I will, as soon as I'm done here, find out from someone at the city. Because this is not what, I mean, we're just not being told.
Right.
And I guess if one of my colleagues knows better, they can turn their light on and inform me.
What we were, what we were told is that, I mean, our total funding didn't get reduced, but we were not allowed to allocate any of that towards the foyer because we were continuing.
Requiring them to work on housing.
Correct.
So in VMC's model and desires, I got 32 seconds left. Best practice is to say you can use the foyer if you are to be working on housing. That's the model.
We're a housing-focused agency. Yes, we feel that somebody needs to have the goal of working towards housing for us to want to do a shelter. That's not the only way you could do a low barrier shelter, but for our.
So that's your model for running the low barrier shelter. So let me just get something straight. No one at the city said, we're pulling the plug on you, you can't have 100K. Is that what we were funding? I don't know.
I don't know the numbers. We were told you can't allocate the money to.
A model that requires housing.
That's right.
I appreciate you illuminating some facts. I'll look into it further.
Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you to everyone who has spoken this evening and also to Adam Walsh for joining us from Eugene, Oregon. I really appreciated hearing from everyone and all of the various perspectives, especially those who are directly impacted. And it was very obvious how difficult it was for some to share their stories. But you came and you did it and I appreciate you for doing that. We started off our conversation tonight hearing from our co-response teams. And it just, that was the first thing that stood out to me was hearing that we stood up the co-response team so quickly. I mean, I would say within a couple of months of conversations starting here on council when we had, you know, a series of workshops about how can we reimagine policing in the city? And then just months later, we're able to have teams responding to these 911 calls. That same year, we were also talking about alternative response in 2020. But now starting 2024, that continues to be a conversation rather than a commitment that we're making as a city and moving forward. We've said this a lot of times here at council that, you know, we don't want to just keep talking about things. We want to actually move things forward. And I believe we're at that point with alternative response. We've had so much discussion since 2020. I agree with the speakers who said, you know, when looking at the data from these programs around the country, we have decades worth of data that show us the value that these services have for a city. Not only in terms of how we would be able to improve emergency services that are available in our city, but also how we would be able to, you know, remove some of that work from our first responders and shift their energy towards those more critical emergencies that we need their expertise on. Or as someone has said, you know, when a law has been broken, rather than when someone is in crisis and in need of a public health response. So what I hope we're able to do, you know, moving forward, I'm still in support of pulling a task force together. I don't know how we pull all of these pieces together. How we, you know, this public hearing is very informative and it's bringing new perspectives before us that will help in our planning and I'm not even going to say discussions moving forward, but in our planning and actions moving forward. But we need to be able to sit down at a table and get into the minutia and really to be able to design a program that fits our city, right? Not just picking a model that has existed elsewhere, but really designing something that works for our city and not, you know, dragging our feet along the way. We saw how quickly we were able to put a co-responder program in place. I want us to move with the same quickness when it comes to alternative response. Let's make 2024 the year that we actually see a team in place to respond to calls. We can make that happen this year, right? We did it with co-response. So lots that we could discuss. I'm going to keep my comments short tonight, but grateful for everybody who came and let's get to work.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I also want to echo a lot of the statements from my colleagues so far. But first of all, just thanking everyone who's come out and shared or just been here to support those who have shared. We've heard a lot and it's a lot to unpack. We've heard from people who are paid to do the work. We've heard from people who volunteered to do the work. And we've also heard tonight from people who've actually experienced and survived to this point the traumas that we're discussing today. One thing that I heard resoundingly this evening from everyone is that one size doesn't fit all. We need more help. We need more collaboration. And we need more resources to make those things happen. With that said, I do want to acknowledge those who spoke on personal experiences and I know that that was very difficult to be able to share. And I want to personally say, even though I wasn't involved in those instances, that I'm so sorry that you all have experienced those things. The mother who shared about calling for help for a teenager and the teenager was twice. The young lady who was in a crisis and the police was called and she had such a horrible experience. The person who shared the letter from a friend about their father and that experience. Those things shouldn't happen. They absolutely should not happen. One thing that I will say is that yes, we do know that KPD has some level of training as it relates to that, but that is not their area of expertise. That is not their area of expertise and I am speaking at this point. And so tonight I would also support a task force, a collective task force that will look closely at this and how do we provide that collaboration? How do we provide more of the resources that are needed? I don't know if Ms. Klein from VMC is still here, but we also, I'm also going to ask that we investigate the situation that she mentioned about the funding being removed from low barrier housing. I know that one of the focuses, it sounds like I heard her say, is that the funding is being removed because their focus is on housing. And I'm not sure if, you know, she, I know that they understand low barrier shelter and housing are people who are actively still in addiction, actively, still actively in mental health, somewhat crises. So how in the world could they possibly be focused on housing when they are just trying to survive? And that's what the low barrier shelter housing supports. And so Vice Mayor, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Frost, if you all can help get that information, the facts back to us as it relates to the pulling of that funding and that wording of it. But again, I am committed to that and supporting a task force at this point when it comes back up to council. And so again, thank you all for being here and for staying to show your support. And I think someone actually mentioned, one of the speakers that said, you know, some of us have probably experienced that and that is true because everyone has a story. And I know sometimes people sit out in the audience and they look at the people that are sitting around the stairs. But we've had, we're human too. We've experienced some of those things and we've had family members that have experienced a lot of the things that you all are talking about today. And so these types, you know, substance abuse, mental health, it does not discriminate. And someone did mention that it doesn't matter what color you are. Life happens. I also especially want to thank CareCuts. I think most of those folks are gone. But a lot of the organizations that have spoken, I have personally experienced what you guys do. I've seen it firsthand. I know people who have taken advantage of the services. CareCuts especially because I've been down there volunteering and I see the disparity, the desperation. Know some of the people that did not survive the winter storm that we just experienced. And it is heartbreaking because everyone does deserve the right to have housing, to have shelter. No one organization can do it together, but I do believe that if we pull resources and we pull folks together who have come and spoke to us and are committed to collaboration, that we can do better and we have to do better. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fugit.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I was just going to say, we have been talking about this for a long time, but I think there were people in our community who were far better educated on it and ready to act on it than some others. And that's usually the way progress happens is we have to bring people along to understand it. I was really pleased to hear tonight many of our healthcare providers and people who work in the field are understanding we need to continue of a care like we do with other things. It is time for a task force. But what I will say is the task force can't be driven with preset outcomes and who's going to do what. We've really got to have a task force that is facilitated by neutral parties to talk about how we put together the best system for Knoxville. And that requires a lot of work, a lot of time and effort to, not an inordinate amount of time, but it is not going to be tomorrow that you have a facilitate discussion and talk about the continuum of care. What I will say worries me, or worries is too strong a word, concerns me is if we do alternative response, and I think that is coming at some point, who manages it, who's responsible? And when we hear that we have such a shortage of mental health providers already, how are we going to staff it? I know one of the problems that we, you know, it sounds like when people say KPD co-responders weren't available, like they just didn't want to be available. It's because we can't find enough mental health, social workers to be a part of that program. They may be more willing to be a part of another, but that is going to be a real challenge, I think, in a field that is understaffed, under-resourced because there are not enough providers. So I'm not saying that we can't do it. I'm just telling you that that is a concern. And like it or not, if government puts money into something, it has to give money to a entity, a defined entity that can manage the resources and report back. And that's why Kahoots said they were an arm of a large nonprofit because the funding mechanism has to be in place with the appropriate financial accountability standards that we expect from any agency that we give money to, to do the government's work. So I think it's time for a task force and I will support us putting a task force together. But again, it's got to be facilitated, I believe, by somebody, an entity, someone who is neutral and can bring folks to the table. I say that from having run nine counties, one vision that was set up to bring task forces together to work on lots of things. People came because we did not have a dog in the fight. We were not a provider. We just facilitated the conversation and let people who provided services and had expertise to make the plan. They came because they weren't afraid we were going to try to get the job. And I think that is real when you have task forces like this that get put together. So that's all I'll say.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks to everyone who participated tonight. I know it's painful for a lot. I could have told stories from that side about family myself, so it was kind of painful for me to hear too. It's clear, I think, that we need more people on the ground, whether the co-responder, there's not enough of them, as she said. We don't have enough social workers, mental health employees to be on the other end. So I fully support the task force for alternative response. But I think we could probably do both and probably have a need for both. My friend Jenny Weatherspoon, years ago, when I was working on the United Wayboard forever, used to say, housing first. I don't care what's wrong with you. I don't care if you have an alcohol addiction, a drug addiction, you're mentally ill. You can't tell people. If you get better, we'll give you somewhere to live. So I think housing first is imperative at all levels because people do better when they can get off the streets and sleep at night. So that's another rant, but anyway, so check on the VMC thing. Other than support the task force, I think that's about all I got. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments? This is not the first time we've talked about this and it won't be the last. And this council has supported a number of actions, some faster than others. But everything that we've discussed tonight, this council has supported, since I've been on council, new ways to increase affordable housing, new ways to increase funding for specific social services, new responses. We've talked a lot about the foyer. We'll follow up on that. But that was a new service that was brought to us as an idea or the mayor and there was response to that. So I have no doubt that we will continue to innovate. I want to also just add, a number of the stories tonight were very touching. I've served in most of the agencies and groups that have spoken tonight. I've walked with people along these situations and no one should be afraid to ask for help. And I think that when someone raises their hand and says, I do need help, we should have a path for them. we should have a path for them. The resources at the end of that path will always be limited. We've talked for hours about how limited the city's role is in this, but we do have a role. And I think we will respond to this need as we have others. So this is a rare night where we've done most of the listening. And I want to thank everybody here for sharing your story with us. It will shape what we do next. So without any other objection, this meeting is adjourned.